All appropriate amusement device operation license shall be acquired and maintained for the operation of any devices. Four is that the applicant will need to acquire a state liquor license. Five is the property owner shall obtain all necessary building permits with one year after the date of approval. And six is the property owner shall meet all conditions within 18 months or approval shall become null and void.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. There's no further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The major site plan review is approved for MAS PR 2510. Thank you.
Next up is a special use permit, SP-25-15, located at 848-56 North Salina Street in Isabella. Owner is 854 Zakari Corp. Applicant is Mohammed Zakari. This is in the MX4 Zone District.
Hello, my name is Mohammed Zakari. I'm applying for the special use permit. It's just for food and a store. This business has been there for over 23 years. My father has been there since 2003. We recently sold the business and just now we're renting it. But the owner is having a hard time getting the special use permit and the certificate of use.
So this is similar to a couple other ones that under the new zoning code upon review on the certificate of uses, they're now required to have a special use permit. So this is sort of to reestablish the business that is subsumed under the new use category, food and beverage retail, under the land use type in the new code. So we've had a few of these similar to this one.
Just for the context for this, are there questions for the applicant?
Well, I'm not sure if it's a question for the applicant, but we do have a SEP Ted for this. As I was just wondering, are we requesting it now in all similar cases or was there anything special problems?
Food and beverage, just in general.
General, okay.
Yeah. With our police department, we feel it's good practice and good for the community and the business.
Great. Great. No, good. Appreciate it. So I guess so this is a question for the applicant with respect to the crime prevention through environmental design report. I appreciate your responses to all of those items. They seem pretty thorough and good. There were two instances where you had a concern about the recommendation. One is with respect to the window decals, which allow you to see out but don't allow anybody to see in.
Yes.
It's my understanding that one of the reasons why we try to keep the windows open, both for looking out and for looking in is so that, you know, anybody outside can see if there's problems going on inside, police, et cetera, whatnot. So you indicated that you would prefer to keep the decals. So I guess it'd be a question for the administrator whether that is okay. The second question is about ladders in the front. Seems like your response was reasonable. The SEP Ted asked for ladders in the front so that nobody could park up next to the store, but you pointed out that there is a ledge there that would prevent that. So that one seems okay. So I just wanted to mention those two things and if staff has any opinion.
Yeah, it's like a two-step on Salina. So one side's like a regular sidewalk and then the other side it goes one step and then another step. No car is getting over.
We can pull up a view of it to...
You could see it right there.
Yeah. I mean, that one seems okay to me. It seems like your response. I just had a question. We did have an issue with window decals on another property that we're dealing with, and so I'm not sure how that was all resolved.
Was that Wolf?
Wolf Street.
Yeah.
You indicated you had already trimmed the trees at the end of the parking lot, right?
Yeah. I spoke with the police the same day they were on the property. I spoke with the police the same day they were on the property during the survey.
Okay. Yeah, those are the only two items that there was any difference with it.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we do typically review those as signs, so we can review that with the applicant.
Okay.
That can be one of the conditions if you choose. Another thing I would point out to the commission is to look at the proposed hours.
Right.
And the consistency with what we've been doing with similar establishments, I believe. 10:00 PM is something that's been consistently brought up.
Right. So generally, in cases like this, we have a clause in there that operating hours consistent with what the common council decides. You have 8 to 12, but as the commissioner was just saying, 8 to 10 would be more within the range of generally what we want to try to do with these kinds of properties. Would that be acceptable to you?
Of course. I was just thinking like 12 on Friday and Saturday.
Right.
I wasn't going to stay open every day till 10. Salina dies out after that.
So you would be comfortable with 8 to 10 during the week?
Yeah.
And up to 12 on Saturday?
Friday and Saturday.
On Friday and Saturday. So I had one more question. You listed parking spaces for 5 to 7. One place it says 5, one place it says 6. Bike rack requirement is one bike rack for every six car parking space. So you're right in the scene. There's nothing in the application about a bike rack, so I was just curious about that particular issue.
If that's what I need to do is get a bike rack, I'll get it.
We actually have two applications tonight. It's right on the scene of whether bike racks are required or not required.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, that can be something that you can add as a condition as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium, write your name, address, and your comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. We have no speakers apparently for this application, so we'll close public comment and turn our attention to our seeker review.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the EF Part 1 prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review EF Part 2 prepared by staff and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe that the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
No.
Having determined that the proposed action will not have a moderate to large impact, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the EF Part 3 accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
I make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the seeker motion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion is approved, and we may now turn our attention to a recommendation to the council for SP 2515 at North Salina and Isabella Street. Is there a motion for action for this recommendation?
I'm with approval of SP-25-15 as presented with a recommendation to the common council for affirmative action and seven special conditions beyond general conditions attached to this particular application. Those conditions are the applicant shall always possess a valid certificate of use. The subject location is prohibited from selling tobacco due to non-eligibility for geographical limitations. The application shall submit photographic evidence of completed improvements of the office of zoning administration SEP Ted report within 30 days. Actually, you have done that, so we can eliminate that special condition. So there's only six special conditions. Excuse me for that. So item three would be the business owner shall abide by the hours of operation that the common council decides, and we're recommending 8 to 10 weekdays and 8 to 12 Friday and Saturday. Item five is no non-signage and decorative lighting shall be permitted to be on the windows of the building facade. Six, the property owner shall obtain all necessary building permits with one year of date of approval. And seven, I'm sorry, six, that was five. Six is the property owner shall meet all conditions within 18 months of approval.
Just for clarification, the store is proposed to be open on Sunday, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so we've got weekdays and Friday.
Weekdays, Friday, and Sunday is 8 to 10.
I think, yeah, Sunday goes with the reduced hour schedule.
So Sunday through Thursday is 8 to 10. Friday and Saturday is 8 to 12.
So those are the listed ones in the packet. We also discussed if you want to add something about bike racks or working with the zoning administration staff on signage or the other two.
So we do want to add a condition, which we number seven regarding the bike racks, and a discussion with zoning administrator regarding the signage, special condition eight.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes. Second.
And discussion now on this motion with the eight conditions just enumerated. If not, then all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That special use permit recommendation is approved for SP 2515, and that goes as a recommendation to the common council for final action at one of their upcoming meetings. I'm not exactly sure when, but in the near future. Thank you. Our next application, please.
Next up, we have another special use permit, SP-25-18, located at 609 Erie Boulevard West. Applicant is Anthony Rojas. This is in the MX3 Zone District.
Evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Rojas with In Architects, 239 East Water Street here in Syracuse. Here with me is the owner's representative, Greg Barkstrom, as well. We have a special use permit application for a business use, specifically a wholesale establishment. It's an existing building located at 609 Erie Boulevard West. It's currently a single-story, approximately 17,000 square foot steel frame building. Its primary occupant is LaChase Construction on the front portion of the building. There's an additional 5,800 square feet of space towards the rear, which this application is looking forward to housing a new tenant within that space, which is mostly a wholesale distributor. So most of the space is storage racks and then with a few offices and a small reception area for any contractor or client of theirs to pick up any of their items from that entry lobby space. The exterior work consists of a few new window openings, a new set of door, an entry door towards the rear of the property, and new building signage located over that door, which is all facing the east of the property, facing the parking lot. Visibility from the road will be very limited to what you can actually see of this additional work. It's kind of set towards the rear of the property. The parking area will also be expanded, sent towards the south to provide the required parking for this new user. And I believe we provided the bike rack that was requested of us as well. I believe that's all the items in the scope of work for this application.
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant from the commission members?
I'm just curious. So this is wholesale, so people will be stopping to pick up products that they've already ordered. So it's not like you're going to have traffic coming in and waiting and trying to pick up something you want to buy, et cetera?
Correct.
I was just curious.
If I may, I'm Greg Barkstrom. So it's Maisiac Incorporated. They're a wholesale door hardware distributor. So I spoke to the owner on the way up. He said, "I would love if there were no retail customers coming."
Right.
So yes, the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Additional questions on this application?
All set. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address, and comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Again, no speakers. We'll close the public comment, and we'll turn our attention to our seeker review for this special use permit.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the EAF Part 1 prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review EAF Part 2 prepared by staff and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe that the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined that the proposed action will not have a moderate to large impact, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the EAF Part 3 accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a seeker motion to that effect?
I make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration.
Second.
Thank you both. Discussion on the seeker motion before us for this project? If there's no discussion, then all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion is adopted, and we will turn our attention now to the special use permit itself or action in the form of a recommendation that will be presented to the common council.
I make a motion to approve SP-25-18 with a recommendation, affirmative recommendation to the common council for approval and beyond the general conditions, three special conditions attached to this. The first special condition is that applicants shall follow approval guidelines from the city departments of engineering and DPW as stated in the project review comments. Two, the property owner shall obtain all necessary building permits within one year of approval. And three, as a property owner, shall meet all conditions within 18 months of the approval of the application or it will become null and void.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on this motion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That motion is approved, and it will proceed to the common council in the form of a recommendation for their action at an upcoming meeting. Thank you very much.
Next up is the South Warren Street abandonment. There are two companion pieces here. There's the actual street abandonment, which is SA-2025-01, and a zoning map amendment to assign a zone district, which is Z-2907. Owner is currently City of Syracuse and represented by Jen Tift.
Good evening, everyone, and nice to see you, gentlemen. I am here on behalf of Commissioner Jeremy Robinson and City Engineer Mary Robison, representing the city who is applying to abandon this partial portion of the 700 block of South Warren Street. This is, of course, the portion of South Warren Street that will be directly in front of the new STEAM high school, and that is why we are requesting abandonment. With me is Dr. Rob DeFlorio from the City School District. Obviously, they will be responsible post-abandonment for maintaining that former roadway, and so if you have questions about how it will be maintained and used moving forward, Rob can certainly answer those questions in detail. But yeah, essentially, you know, we are basically looking to restrict public traffic on this street. It will, of course, no longer be a public street. The district will manage buses, which will do drop off and pickup for the high school kids. And of course, we've been working, the city has been working to make sure there's an emergency vehicle plan, so there will be provisions for, obviously, police and fire should there be an emergency at the school, and if they need to access, that will be possible. But it will sort of cease being a public roadway. Only other point to make, just to contextualize this, is while the school has been under construction for the last year, year and a half or so, this portion of South Warren Street has been blocked off.
People are kind of used to it.
Exactly. So I think people are hopefully used to it. We have met with the Salvation Army, which is the only other sort of stakeholder that directly needs access to this block of South Warren. That's actually why we're not, obviously, requesting the abandonment of the whole block. Their driveway for their parking lot is accessible, as you can see from the map, just as you kind of veer right onto South Warren from South Salina Street. And so we met with them, and from their perspective, the current state is working relatively fine for their clients and their visitors. Basically, folks can use that driveway for ingress and egress, just would have to jog, obviously, a little bit left to turn right onto South Salina. Again, it's been working without a safety incident thus far. The district will certainly be helping to manage that traffic flow, but in addition, city transportation is looking at options to provide additional signage, just so it's very clear, you know, if you're in a private vehicle, where you're supposed to go. So that's the only other comment, just for your consideration.
Is it going to be clearer than the bridge on Onondaga Parkway?
I'm sorry?
Is it going to be clearer than the bridge on Onondaga Parkway?
Hopefully, yes. No low bridges to contend with here, thankfully.
Thank goodness.
Happy to answer questions or defer to Rob.
Thank you. That's a great overview. I would like Dr. to come forward. Before the meeting began, we were looking at the map over here, and we got a little extra benefit of some clarification from him, and I'd like to get that onto the record in terms of how that space is going to operate. A couple of features that you explained in terms of ensuring the safety of students and families who are dropping off or picking up students and signage and so forth and personnel that you're going to use. Couldn't you just, in an abbreviated way, just tell us how those safety issues are going to be addressed with that space?
Yes, and thank you for allowing me to speak on this topic. It's very important for the safety of students. As you know, that can be a very busy area, you know, pickup and drops off of buses. It can be a very dangerous situation. So by closing this off, we are prepared to put, the school district's prepared to put a gate at the south end, and that would be locked during non-school hours. We actually intend to unlock it for a couple hours in the morning. We'll re-lock it again, and then for dismissal, we'll open it again. We will have sentries, our school sentries in the school, doing that work, managing the traffic in that area, just to keep everyone safe. So we will maintain it as best we can.
And it's maybe good that the school is phasing in its total enrollment, so as things get busier and more students are there, everyone gets accustomed to it in year one or year two before the full complement of students is there. So that works in your favor, I think.
Yeah, so we're starting with 250 students. We'll add 250 each year. Year four will be 1,000. So the freshman class, starting this September with 250 students, and then the next year, another 250.
And ultimately, 1,000.
Ultimately, 1,000, yes.
Great. Any questions for the applicant?
It's exciting to see September 2025 as an actual date for the first class.
Yeah, it is.
Congratulations.
We're working on it every day.
We actually did have discussion with some of the alum of that building, who were very interested in having that school restored and be put back into use.
Yeah, it's happening. I mean, we have over 100 people working there each day. We intend to open in September. Hopefully, September 3rd students, September 2nd an opening. We're very close, so we'll see. It's a tight schedule right now.
Well, it's a great milestone. It's just immediately ahead of us, so.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward, provide your name, address, and comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward, provide your name, address, and comments. So again, we have no speakers for or against. We will close public comment on this and proceed to action. I should have mentioned at the outset that this is kind of a two-part action on the part of the commission, both the recommendation on the street abandonment and then the zoning map amendment, and so we will take up each of those separately, and each will ultimately go to the common council for final action. But for starters, let's begin with the street abandonment in our seeker review.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the EAF Part 1 prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the EAF Part 2 prepared by staff and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe that the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined that the proposed action will not have a moderate to large impact, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the EAF Part 3 accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a seeker motion to that effect?
I make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration.
Second.
Thank you both. Discussion on the seeker motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Seeker motion is approved, and we may now proceed to the street abandonment issue per se, SA-2025-01, and this will take the form of a recommendation to be presented to the common council.
I make a motion to approve SA-2025-01 with an affirmative recommendation to the common council for approval. And beyond general conditions, we have three conditions stated. The first two conditions are actually a two-part condition. One is the applicant shall successfully file a parcel map with the Onondaga County Clerk's Office and obtain a filing number. And that done, the applicant shall file the parcel map so that within 60 days of approval with the county clerk's office. And per the Onondaga County Planning Board recommendation, the city is required to coordinate with the New York State Department of Transportation to make sure that any mitigation that's necessary is taken care of.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion? If there's no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The street abandonment recommendation is approved, and we move to the zoning map amendment. Is there a motion on this? Z-2907.
Move approval of Z-2907 with affirmative recommendation to the common council for approval and one condition, that condition being the applicant shall successfully file a map at the Onondaga County Clerk's Office and obtain a file number before the zoning map amendment takes effect.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion on this motion for the zoning map amendment? If there's no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That motion is approved, and will go to the common council for a final determination. Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck. Our next application, please.
Next up, we have a series of zoning map amendments from the City of Syracuse, from the Office of Zoning Administration as the applicant. First up is 200 Salisbury Road, owned by David O'Connor, pending zone district. Staff recommending that this be rezoned to R1. R1.
Thank you. So there's no applicant per se. This is the city here, so I mean...
Yeah, these are map maintenance. These are pending zone district assignments to these parcels that currently do not have one.
So any immediate questions from the commission members regarding this zoning map amendment for the first property on Salisbury Road?
No questions. Thank you. It's not a question about approval per se, but I'm just kind of curious. I mean, this is kind of an odd situation, because you basically have a couple of feet of each of those properties in the front on Salisbury Road that's city property, et cetera. My understanding is at least one of the properties, and from looking at the map, it looks like they could use it, wants to do some driveway renovation or other work. So what happens with permits for a case like this? Where do they go? Do they go to the city? Do they have to go to the city end? Solvay? What's the process? You don't know?
Well, if it's on the city's side, typically, the city will permit it. Usually, like, the actual item or structure that they're applying for is either on one side or the other. I can think of one, maybe on the Velasco Road, where the actual structure in the rear was actually kind of split, and in that, we just coordinated with the town of Anadaga, and they kind of deferred to us, and we took it. But typically, it's on one side or the other. This, for a driveway, that's a little bit different. We would definitely talk to the, is this Towne Gettys?
Solvay.
Solvay. Towne Gettys. Yeah. So we typically talk to their codes office and permit office and coordinate that if there's an odd situation.
Well, it's interesting, because it looks like the block between Montrose and Fay Road might actually have some similar situations with some of those properties lying running across the front.
Yeah, I can think of a few. Velasco Roads coming to mind, some Winkworth Streets, I believe, and these. I'm sure there might be some others, but those are...
We might see a few more of these down the road.
We will find them.
We will find you.
Additional questions for staff?
Staff, thanks.
If not, then anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application, please come forward, provide your name, address, and comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. No speakers. We'll close public comment, and we will conduct our seeker review for Z-2902.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the EAF Part 1 prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the EAF Part 2 prepared by staff and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe that the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined that the proposed action will not have a moderate to large impact, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the EAF Part 3 accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
I make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion. If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Seeker motion carries, and we may now proceed to the zoning map amendment itself, Z-2902, and this, again, will take the form of a recommendation to the common council. Excuse me.
I make a motion to approve Z-2902 as presented with an affirmative recommendation to the common council for approval, and no special conditions beyond the general conditions.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion for Z-2902. If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That is approved. Moves to the common council for a final determination. Next up, something very similar.
I don't assume we can do ditto for both of these, too?
Yeah. Without counsel here, we will do seeker for the remaining two, and you'll make a motion. But yeah, they're pretty much the same. It's a different owner. This one is 204 Salisbury, Z-2903. Owner is Lawrence Mullen. Same. Everything else is the same.
Thank you. Any questions on this property? In that case, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? If so, please come to the podium in the center of the room, providing your name, address for the record, and your comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. So we have no additional speakers here. We will close the public hearing, or excuse me, we will close public comment, and turn our attention to our seeker review, this time encompassing both Z-2903 and 2904.
You know, I don't know.
You should do it separately, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would love to say yes, but we'll just do it for both.
We'll take an extra three minutes.
You know, has everyone had an opportunity to review the EAF Part 1 prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the EAF Part 2 prepared by staff and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe that the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined that the proposed action will not have a moderate to large impact, I recommend the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the EAF Part 3 accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a seeker motion to that effect?
Make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration.
Second.
Discussion on the seeker motion before us now. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Seeker motion carries. We move now to the zoning map amendment per se for Z-2903. Is there a motion for action on this?
I make a motion to approve Z-2903 as presented with an affirmative recommendation to the common council for approval, and no special conditions beyond general conditions.
Great. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion for Z-2903. If there's no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That is approved. Moves on to the common council. Our last in this series of three.
Same thing. This is Z-2904 at 208 Salisbury. Owner is Kelly Falconeer and Nathaniel Brusa.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission members for this property of 208? Okay. In that case, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward, provide your name, address, and comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. So no speakers for this application. We will close public comment, turn our attention to the seeker review.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the EAF Part 1 prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the EAF Part 2 prepared by staff and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe that the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined that the proposed action will not have a moderate to large impact, I recommend the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the EAF Part 3 accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration.
Second.
You both. Discussion on the seeker motion before us. If there's no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Seeker motion carries, and we turn our attention to the zoning map amendment, Z-2904. Is there a motion for action on this?
I make a motion to approve Z-2904 as presented with an affirmative recommendation to the common council for approval, and no special conditions.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion for the map amendment. If there's no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? This is approved for Z-2904. Moves to the common council for action by the council, and we continue on our list.
Next up brings us to three items under other business on the agenda. First up is a second-time extension request for a major site plan review, MASPR-23-07 at 901 South State Street in Adams. This is the Syracuse Housing Authority project in MX2 Zone District. Applicant is Heather Sunzer.
If we can hear.
Good evening, commission members. Heather Lamandola with Barclay Damon. We represent McCormick Baron Salazar, the developer for this project, and zoning staff asked that someone from Syracuse Housing Authority, who is the owner of the land, be present, so I have with me Bill Killery, and he's the CFO for Syracuse Housing Authority. The trigger of this request, of the second-time extension, is due to Chase Bank, the private lender for the development, requesting that the approval timeline be consistent with the construction timeline. And so the date of September 1st, 2027, is the reason for the extension request. The zoning administrator did give the first extension to March of next year, but due to the size of the project and the complexity with demolition and new construction and the new street, it isn't reasonable to expect the construction to be completely done and all the conditions satisfied by March of 2026. And so we have Syracuse Housing Authority here, if you'd like to ask any other specific questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant and the property owner?
Not really. I guess just to confirm for staff, though, as a second extension that resets the clock on the conditions for a one-year approval, where all permits have to be completed, and an 18-month approval for all conditions being met. So I just wanted to confirm that that's the case.
Correct.
That's your understanding, too, correct?
Well, we would expect that it would be completed by September 1st, 2027, and all those conditions met by that time.
It's well within your timeframe, but that's our standard conditions, yep.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come to the podium. Again, no speakers. We will close public comment and turn our attention to, or seeker review. We don't need one. We just can act directly out of extension. Is there a motion for action on this time extension request to September of 2027?
I make a motion to approve MASPR-23-07 as presented with three conditions. The first condition is the property owner shall obtain all necessary building permits with one year after the date of approval of the second extension. Two, the property owner shall meet all conditions within 18 months of the approval of the second extension, or it will become null and void. And three is a reference to following the 18 conditions that were originally attached to the approval of this particular project.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on this motion. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That time extension is approved. Good luck. And we continue on with a couple more cases here.
Two-three mile limits to close us out. First up is 3S-25-06 in the town of Anadaga at 4278, 4284, 4290, and 4300 Norton Road. We have the city engineer's approval for this.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this one? It's been through the engineering department. If there are no questions, is there a motion for action on the town of Anadaga three-mile limit case?
I make a motion to approve 3S-25-06 as presented.
Second.
Discussion. If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The town of Anadaga three-mile limit case is approved, and we have one more. Last one, 3S-25-07 in the town of DeWitt at 4040 and 4044 New Court Ave. We also have city engineers' approval on this. Great. Thank you. Just questions or clarification needed for the town of DeWitt three-mile limit case. If not, is there a motion for action on 3S-25-07?
Make a motion to approve 3S-25-07 as presented.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion on this motion. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Any other business to come before us tonight?
Nope.
Covered it?
We need it out in three weeks.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second. I'll second. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? We are adjourned until the 28th of July. Thank you all.
Yeah, that's right. Missed with the adjournment, though. All right. Nicely done.